I'll call the meeting to order. I pledge allegiance to the fighting of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I convene as Walworth County Plan and zoning board. Any new business? New business? Okay, I got a motion on the floor. I need a second.
I'll second.
Got a second. Any more discussion? Here and then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Puts say nay. Motion passed. I convene as Walworth County Board of Zoning Adjustment. Any old business? New business? Okay, I got a motion on the floor. I need a second.
I'll second.
Got a second. Any more discussion on that? Here and then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Puts say nay. Motion passed. I convene as Board of County Commissioners. Approval of the agenda. Uh, there's a couple things. I'd like to take number seventeen and eighteen and just switch them two around. And then twenty-three. Uh, that is monthly report. I'm gonna scratch that for today.
I'll email it out to you guys.
Is there anything else? Not a taken motion to approve the agenda?
I saw.
They got a motion on the floor. I need a second. Got a second. Any more discussion on that? Here and then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Puts say nay. Motion passed. In public forum. We'll go to fourteen. Consider motion to approve county commission minutes of September third. Has everybody had a chance to go over them? And goes approval. Okay, I got a motion on the floor. I need a second.
I'll second.
Got a second. Any more discussion on that? Here and then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Puts say nay. Motion passed. Number fifteen. Consider motion to approve claims we paid and presented. Everybody had a chance there?
I did see one thing that uh, been brought up. Sorry if I corrected. Yours was your deal for Sioux Falls is under courthouse. They just voted up to commissioners.
We didn't reprint the whole list that stood in for your.
It was just, it was in the wrong place, but.
Yeah. So we changed it.
Okay. Anything else?
Move through the people.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor. I need a second.
I'll second.
Got a second. Any more discussion on that? Here and then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Puts say nay. Motion passed. Discussion regarding the support circle.
I don't know if you want to do that in hour or when we discuss the budget. It's gonna be under that too, so. Either one would just matter.
That's there. We just will discuss it right now.
We're just gonna see which one you uh, pay either Northeast Mental Health or support circle for what she's doing. Did she talk to you about the?
Um, basically, um, Jess called me after the last commission meeting. And then I met with the sheriff and what she's doing for us is uh, something that the Northeastern Mental Health does not offer to us, which is basically the qualified mental health care provider to do the mental health evaluations. And so my recommendation at least is uh, do whatever you want to do with um, Northeastern Mental Health and just continue paying just as is for her at for each evaluation. I don't know what that total was last year. Do you remember, Josh? What was the total last year for the Q M H P costs?
I have, yeah, I don't know.
So whatever that was.
But I mean, do are we still gonna keep paying the mental health too then, or? I mean, oh, that's where I'm kinda a little confused on that.
That's where um, Northeastern Mental Health is our area provider. Cause they're basically the only one. So it's up to you on whether you want to continue to um, can you to continue to pay them as the area provider. As far as other things they do, I think they discussed a little bit, provided some mental health for the schools. Things like that. Also um, under the statutes, if they present us a bill, which I don't think, have we ever gotten a bill from them other than what we yearly contribute? Yeah. They're supposed to give us a basically bill off what we've given them. And then once we've hit that amount, then it was at, remember what rate it was generally was?
Seventy-five dollars.
Seventy-five dollars an hour, so. Which they've never done. Cause I would assume we've never hit that.
What have we actually used? Or what have we gotten out of Northeast Mental Health, actually?
Yes, sir.
They don't provide us that information, but they they assisted, what, sixty-four or something? Walworth County residents last year.
I do, do they uh, pay for the uh, a lot of juvenile mental health stuff? Like auditor said, we don't get a lot of that personal information just because of the HIPAA rules, but.
People can go there and fill out an application and if they qualify, then.
And it's based on income.
Yep. And they can get the services for free.
Yes, Josh. That number is fourteen thousand six fifty.
I don't know. To me, it just looks like a, I don't know how we can do without both of them.
Yes. I'll just interject also. I mean, that's a service I don't wanna lose. I'll have to, for a Q M H P besides the emergency room, um, that's an Aberdeen trip. I mean, several hours with somebody out of the county. Um, she comes directly to the jail now. So that's a huge benefit. She'll stop in the morning, see somebody. She'll stop in the app, I mean, when she came, obviously, but she's done it early in the morning, get out of her phone, before she goes over to the home branch.
Yes.
And when the sheriff and I talk, that is one that we definitely don't want to lose her as the Q M H P because again, it's a limited niche that she fills and it's definitely cost effective for us so we don't have to transport an individual out of the community or find someone else to do it.
I would suggest we keep doing as we have been.
I kinda think so too.
Pay the Northeast Mental Health and I think she said that when I talked to her, they counseled or talked to her, whatever, sixty-four different people in the county that would not have been able to afford their counseling, whatever, but hadn't been for that, so.
What's the rest of you guys think?
Would we be able to put the budget for both of them? I know Jess was asking for twenty thousand for the year and she would provide extra services. Is there room in the budget for twenty thousand if we paid both of them?
There's a budget. Do you want a budget for twenty thousand extra? Um, usually though, I think those jail mental health funds don't come out of the mental health facility budget. They come out of the jail. The jail medical services.
Yeah.
It's either gonna be jail medical or mental health, yeah.
Whenever we pay Jess, it comes out of jail medical services.
I would suggest we continue to pay her the two hundred and twenty-five dollars she would charge us per call or whatever you wanna say there.
Instead of having them.
Instead of a fly rate, yeah.
Does Jess have a problem with that?
I don't know. Last time I talked to her, well, I told her to talk to Jamie, but she said that she would provide extra services and stuff to go along with it. No matter how many Q M H Ps she would do or whatever, but she hasn't been charging for a lot of paperwork that needs to be done. I guess we could just do it that way and then she can start charging for the paperwork and everything else she's doing.
Well, I guess we really don't know, have a clue whether she would have some sort of idea what it would be.
Said it takes about three hours of paperwork for every Q M H P.
Well, yes, to me, I guess if we try it this way and see how it works and.
In my mind, she's the one that set the two hundred and twenty-five dollars per visit, sort of. She evidently thought that covered her expenses. Josh said they never negotiated that price or anything. That's what she set, so.
That's correct. I never asked her at all what that was. I just talked to her about the services that she could provide and um, whether she had the credit, you know, I talked to her about credentials and she was able to do the Q M H P portion. Cause there's not many people that have those credentials to do. And then she's, couple times I've taken over to her office, but very seldom she's done them all in jail.
I guess run with it that way. How the rest of you feel?
The the fourteen thousand six fifty that we've currently paid on Q M H Ps, that's just through like the first of September or something like that? Believe that's what we paid out last year.
Oh, that's what we paid out last year total?
Yes.
I can have it over for this year, so.
I think they said she got what, twenty-six or twenty-eight the first, until the end of June of this year?
I don't know.
Jessica remembered, but I, I was thinking it was twenty-six or twenty-eight, so.
You said she gets what?
Two hundred and forty-five.
So which way you looking at going, Jeff? So you doing it this way?
Just the way we were doing it right now. I mean, we're paying her every, for everyone.
This is got fifty-four hundred dollars. I don't know, Josh, is that? But this is out of the. Becky, which one did that come out of?
What she counted?
Yeah.
That's got all, I ran it by her name, so it's listing jail and mental health.
Okay, so it's fifty-four fifty. Is that one?
So how great and gorgeous of her. This year.
Is that just on this name?
Yeah. What was it? Almost four thousand?
This year?
This year.
Thirty-nine seventy-five.
Very well. How do you think?
Well, I, yeah, I think this, the information, um, I feel like if she's not feeling that she's getting enough for her paperwork, she needs to say to either build a little more or figure out different costs on that. If she's spending more time on paperwork than what than what she's getting paid for, but she'll have to look at that on a, on a per basis, I guess. I don't know. But I mean, at the two twenty-five, if for evaluation or whatever that is, I have no idea what all that includes. But if that's not including paperwork and she's spending three more hours, I can see where she's putting like a little bit more on that, but if she's been paid four thousand dollars this year, it seems like a pretty big jump to go to twenty thousand. For.
We just have to reevaluate our costs and submit whatever she feels.
From the way to, the way I understand it, Josh approved whatever she billed us. So that's what she billed us. And I haven't gotten nothing yet, Jeff, and I really appreciate the services she gives us. But if, if that's not covering her costs, then she should add to her bill and.
Yeah, that's what I say. If she's not giving.
It's out of line. Josh will have to talk to her or negotiate her something.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that's how I would add it too. I mean, that's, that's what she got, and it's, it should have covered everything.
It's no different than when you send me a bill. I assume when you send me a bill for stuff you do, it's covering your expenses.
My, my, my other question on that deal is, and I don't know, we had, this is related in a sense because it's Northeast Mental Health, but we spent fifteen thousand dollars on Northeast Mental Health. And they had sixty-four deals last year, whatever it was. Are we overpaying that? Could we be looking at ten thousand dollars there, or what's the, what's the dollar amount there?
I was saying, you were not getting paid what it was.
We have no idea what's going on. We have no idea what we're spending money on there. We're just throwing fifteen thousand dollars out there.
Ever since I've been here. It's been fifteen-five since I started here in Madison. Back in two thousand seven.
Well, what is it actually costing? That's what Marion's getting at. We don't have any paperwork showing what it's actually going to.
We're not gonna know what it's costing, cause they get a lot of funding from the state and everything else. But that fifteen-five isn't paying for each individual person that goes there from our county. It's, it's basically like a, we're just.
A joint contribution by all agencies.
Contributing to the pot.
They cover most of Northeastern South Dakota.
Takes it off case load. Um, Northeast Mental Health, it's a, it's a consortium like Warhawkins. There's several counties involved with it. Campbell County, Brown County, you know, there's a, a group of counties that belong to it. They have a, yeah, I don't even know, is Phyllis still our board representative for that?
Yes, I know.
Each county has a representative to it. I'm not sure why it'll have certain, you know, they've always come every year.
Well.
With some kind of.
Because of coronavirus.
I suppose, but, um, but given to Dr. Jamie's phone, I, they've always come every year. That's some kind of a presentation for years. But like I said, it's, I, I know there's other services. I don't even know what they all, where that all turns out to be.
Just tell Jess to reevaluate her, her cost and go from there.
I would think that would be the best. All righty, anything else on that? Okay, let me switch them around. I'd like to take a motion to go into executive session regarding a personnel matter.
So move.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor. I need a second.
I'll second.
Got a second. Any more discussion? Here and then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Puts say nay. Motion passed. Jamie.
Give me a second.
All right, come out of executive session at uh, ten fourteen. And we'll just take a five minute break. I'll call the meeting back to order. Uh, we'll go to number eighteen.
Seventeen.
Assistant?
Assistant. Yep?
Yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am very excited to have been able to attend the conference, the S D E May Conference in Spearfish. And they had a lot of very excellent presentations, but the one item that I would bring to your attention, gentlemen, is the presentation by Holly Strand, Pennington County Sheriff's Office, Computer Forensics Examiner, Internet Crimes Against Children. In my position description, it states systematically identify and analyze the natural technological and manmade risks and hazards that pose potential threats or risks and significant consequences to Walworth County. This is definitely both a technological and manmade threat. And due to the expansion of online education because of COVID nineteen, um, it intensifies the threat that we have here in our state and likely in our county. Countries outside of the United States have legitimate businesses that they push porn and pedophilia. They go around the clock. I'm sure you've heard that it's a trillion dollar business. Holly spoke about the threats in her county that she examines and works to protect these children. There are children in the United States who have committed suicide because of being targeted by these people who then ex- commit extortion on the children that if you don't do what I ask you to do, then I'm gonna expose you to all your friends. Just yesterday, my sister asked me to pray for the kids in their parochial school because the former principal committed suicide. He was a well-loved principal. They knew that he had a history of depression. I know nothing of the gentleman. But things like this happen all the time. Was, was he the target of this? That he would be exposed in, in his community? I, I don't, I don't know. But this is very real threat and um, Holly told the story of one little boy who thought he was safe um, when the pedophile told him that he was gonna come to his regional airport and he said, well, we don't have any regional airport in Rapid City. It's just Ellsworth Air Force Base, so this guy doesn't know what he's talking about. So then he found out, indeed, they do have a regional airport and the guy was coming after him. I believe that we need to make parents and teachers aware so that they can prevent or help those who might already be in that situation. And I am working to gather more information from Holly Strand to be able to provide to our teachers and our parents. And that's the main thing I wanted to talk with you about this morning. If anybody had any advice for me with regard to that, I'm certainly open to hearing about it. I did not want, I did not want to report about this today, but it's my job to do so. Do you really have any questions, gentlemen? The other pages are just um, things that I'm, are on my schedule to do and, and that I'm working on.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We go to number eighteen. Consider motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty dash zero nine, adopt of the twenty twenty-one annual budget. Resolution twenty twenty dash oh nine. Adopt some annual budgets for Walworth County, South Dakota, whereas seven twenty-one dash five through thirteen. Provide that the Board of County Commissioners shall each year prepare a provisional budget for all expenditures and revenues of the county and all its institutions and agencies for such fiscal year. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners did prepare provisional budget and call the same to be published by law. And whereas due and legal notice has been given to the meeting of the Board of County Commissioners for consideration of such provisional budget and all changes, elevations and eliminations and additions have been made thereto. Now therefore be it resolved that such provisional budget as amended in all its purposes, schedules, appropriations, months, estimates and all matters therefore set forth shall be approved and adopted as the annual budget appropriation of expenditures for Walworth County, South Dakota. All its institutions and agencies for calendar year beginning January first, twenty twenty and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one. And the same is hereby approved and adopted by the Board of County Commissioners of Walworth County, South Dakota this twenty-ninth day of September. this twenty-ninth day of September, twenty twenty. The annual budget is so adopted to be available for public inspection during normal business hours at the office of the County Auditor, Walworth County, South Dakota. Accompanied taxes are levied by Walworth County for the year January first, twenty twenty-one through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. I need a motion for that. I jump move. Okay, I got a motion on the floor. I need a second.
I'll second it.
Got a second. Any more discussion on that? Here, none, all, all in favor, say aye.
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 Pose, say nay. Motion passed. What do you have on?
I just have the monthly budget report.
If you have any questions, I take a motion. I got a motion on the, on the floor to approve the report. Need a second? I'll second. Any second, any more discussion? Here, none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, say nay. Motion passed.
I just wanted to give you the update, um, of the Soul Brothers situation. We saw them and had their surveyor show up. So Mike Engineering does my annual survey of the landfill. And so he's going to, um, coddle me on doing that final survey for the project. And then we'll just have to reduce their final payment by that amount as well. Because we need to get this all wrapped up and that's about our only, only thing we can come up with doing at this point.
She didn't like, didn't go out there and buckle back down to them guys that work with it. But I was out there and did that already. That was quite a while. It's a big hole.
That's what's going on currently with Soul Brothers. On the three or four, they had something come up. So I'll just email it to you possibly today or tomorrow. Other than that, anybody have any questions for me currently?
You're here. Now he's moving some equipment over a little bit.
Okay, then let's just jump to you, Josh. Yeah. Here, if I hear that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Oh, me, I must have, I, I guess I'm good evening, Mike. No questions, I discussion on the DDM report for the jail. Kevin, I sent you some literature, the same email and stuff that I got. Becky also received it. Um, the digital, Jamie's aware of what it is. Basically, what the court's trying to do is put a DDM hookup in the jails during this whole COVID-19 rampage. We can use COVID dollars that the county has received for that purpose. That's an approximate number of, I think it was forty-six something, but around forty-seven hundred dollars to get it done um, over at the jail. That would give us the digital network and help us with our initial appearances. And be our, uh, not what I say, maybe with the, with the, uh, with COVID-19, we can separate. If I have something going on in the jail, they can still be seen and not be brought up to court. Right now, they're, they, they have been tested. They are negative. Worked through some employees and two out of, two out of the three are back. That were out sick like I was. But things are going good over there. But like I said, taking them out of the building, bringing them back to court. They are wearing base masks and stuff. And hand sanitizers, you know, so. Basically the connection, I know Kevin wanted this to be seen and, um, it's not, it's put out in the discussion. That's fine. I guess I'm just here to discuss and see what the board wants to do.
I guess, uh, well, I had asked Josh where it would be put at. You're saying in the one little room.
The visitation side for the inmates, um, we would go, they're, they have a cart set up, but we would have the equipment mounted in there and this mounted to the wall.
That ain't gonna be big enough to do that, is it?
Well, one person at a time. And just would see each one at a time. Even given a course of testing. They go in and out, so.
Did you, uh, give us the ones installing it to see how much room? Because, I mean, that's a narrow space. Is that video camera gonna be able to pick up that much in that room?
They said it'll work, so, um, but they'll need to obviously come and inspect the site.
The other comment that I would have would be by next, a week from today, we should have an answer of, uh, what's going on with, uh, everybody on this new jail. My suggestion would be instead of spending that money right now on this, let's wait for a week and see what everybody's decision is on it. We're gonna have to make a decision one way or another on this jail anyway. Instead of spending the money right now, my suggestion is wait and let's see what we're gonna do with this jail. But the answer that we're gonna get next week.
Okay, so would you like to put back on this, on the calendar for the sixth then? Or are you guys?
Uh, the sixth is when we should have an answer because on the sixth, I gotta go to McPherson.
Okay.
For theirs. We should have everybody's answer by the, I haven't heard nothing from Dewey yet.
I guess my opinion, Dewey would, I mean, we're looking at doing something totally different. We really wanna put that money into that jail right at this moment. I mean, I'm just looking at, is it something that has to be done? We haven't had it before. Is it something that's that, that we have to do it right now? Or, or can that be until we, until we actually know what we're doing?
Yeah, that's it. It's up to you. I mean, it's up to you guys, it's definitely up to you.
Yeah, I'm just looking at, it looks like we're taking different, different routes right at the moment, maybe. And, uh, I don't know, I don't know if we really, we really wanna put money in there. Then we'd have to, I'm sure it would work elsewhere, but then we'd have to pay somebody to take it out, reinstall it somewhere else.
But we won't be moving it for two or three years. Whatever we do, we won't be moving anything else. For how long?
Or whatever we do. We're having to be moving it, our prisoners for a couple of years.
It's making a difference. I don't know what's gonna happen before then.
What's that?
I would say it's gonna happen before two years.
I would be very surprised. I guess my opinion is that I think it should be put on hold for us a little bit. And I think there's some things that are, that are coming up that, that are kind of concerning that we'll, we'll know more in the, in the next few weeks. My personal opinion, I think, is to put it on hold for right now. It'll, it'll be coming out here in a minute now, but I just think there's some things coming up that we need. Yeah, I think we should wait.
And that's funny. I, I don't have a problem with that.
I mean, I don't know if it's a, it didn't, it didn't cost you anything for them to come and make sure that this is even a worker.
No, I mean, he, he comes up and checks the lines all the time. I mean, it's part of, it's part of a line that we already have, so. We're saving dollars right there because we have our communicator. So always there'd be a line coming. I'd save us some dollars because we already have there. The electronic fingerprinting and scanning.
I truly believe by our meeting, our second meeting in October, that we would, we would know. So I would think that we should probably maybe just wait until like that October, be, and discuss it then.
And that would be the?
Twentieth.
Twentieth.
I think that's one we should shoot for. Okay. All righty?
Yep.
And the last one, um, a new hire, Kendra Russell, at fifteen sixty-eight per hour full-time corrections.
Okay, I'll take a motion for that. I'll jump move. Okay, I got a motion on the floor. I need a second. Got a second. Any more discussion on that? Here, none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, say nay. Motion passed. All right, anything else, Josh?
No.
All righty. Thank you.
Thank you. Dewey, no, um, I haven't. The last time I talked to him, and I got a hold of him, um, after the meeting, I don't think they really had an answer yet, but I guess I told Dan to call you and gave him your number. But I think he has it already, so.
Great, thank you. Carrie.
That executive session personnel, are you prepared for your summary? If you weren't, I would have went through it. Just a clarification. God, I can see stress in your eyes. That's a good thing. I shouldn't be alone, right?
Right.
So look at me. I ain't so stressed, please, don't leave me. Over the monthly budget report. This is gonna be a delicate one. Becky, you're gonna have to add in with comments. On the township side, uh, the ending balance eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and six. We've got to transfer, this being held back at this time, of a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars worth of expenditures to the secondary roadside. You wanna, I need this back if you wanna look it over. I considered on the township side that, uh, do we have the ability to just transfer the funds from the cash balance and secondary? Cause that budget balance, uh, specific line item restricted account is gonna go in the red pretty big. If that goes in the red, then the entire two oh one account budget is gonna feel the impact.
I'm gonna go.
Comments? I initially, this was the state's attorney, did be involved with comments. I originally thought a supplement to the budget for township expenditures. You understand what I'm saying? And that's only for the known expenditure. The chip ceiling, uh, since Riverview Road is a secondary road, those expenses haven't been broken out of the billing yet. uh, those expenses haven't been broken out of the billing yet. And just to grab a number, it's looking like, uh, uh, these aren't factual numbers, but somewhere around twenty-five thousand dollars a mile is what it costs to chip sale. That being three quarters of a mile, uh, that number would be somewhat inflated. But those numbers haven't been broken out for actual fixed expenditures for that secondary road.
Yes, Jamie. Are you gonna anticipate a, um, looks like a negative amount on townships? Is, are you also anticipating a negative for secondary or don't know yet?
That kinda plays into, uh, that kinda plays into the agenda item about, uh, advertised purchase greater.
Okay.
And this is my mechanism that micro-managing fund balances to make sure that, uh, we utilize the entire budget. Did that answer your question? Are you guys have any question?
Listening to you.
Like I said, uh, this is August. Uh, when you see September, you might wanna drop these numbers down. Actual expenditures unprocessed yet, a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, a hundred and nineteen thousand seven hundred and eleven eighty-six for the road out. And that's the, the entire, uh, chip ceiling that we did. Of that, the new Everett Township Road gets broken down as a secondary road expense. Follow me? So what I'm reporting by the transfers is actual expenses that don't include the chip ceiling of the road. Uh, another bill that's coming in, uh, September's report, Johnson, Rockland Sand, a hundred and two thousand three hundred and sixteen sixteen. And, uh, not factual, but I'm pretty confident that seventy-five thousand of that is their activity for the chip ceiling at that thirty-five cents a square yard. Uh, if seventy-five thousand, the additional, uh, what is that, twenty-seven thousand is probably, uh, the assistance they provided for hauling gravel. And we did deck up two more semi-loads of hot mix last week, uh, for the asphalt road down in Hoben, which will be coming yet, so. What did you just say on this?
The B thirty, a mile further in our system as far as secondary roads, so you might wanna have, because it would be less, there's a, a different set.
Yeah, I think what's, uh, you're saying, these numbers.
Yeah, but this is what actually, this is some, it's hard to explain.
But as far as cash, this is the, the current number of cash in secondary roads. But with this much budget. Follow me? If there's eighty-eight thousand in budget remaining.
Oh, yeah.
In township, then by virtue of a transfer, when we go in the red, we go right into the cash fund.
Yep.
But then we're going over a budget allowance.
Right, we should have something on that, but I just wanna make sure that what she's got is quoted as statutory.
It's really kinda confusing. Uh, Mary and I discussed it the other day. It's kinda confusing that, uh, and I would endorse you to call legislative audit, Becky, but they're saying as long as we don't have a mill levy for secondary road maintenance, uh, which I feel we don't. Is that right?
Well, the, we have a levy for. Just for small removal.
Yeah, five. No levy for secondary road maintenance. Uh, statutory condition, county shall establish a no levy not to exceed a dollar eighty-five cents per thousand dollars evaluation for the purpose of secondary road maintenance.
Uh, you are correct.
With all due respect to the county commission, that if there's no levy, and hasn't been a levy since ninety-seven, how did eight hundred thousand dollars worth of revenue show up in the cash balance of secondary road? Just a comment. Which brings us to, I, I think you guys have had a pretty busy, stressful day.
Not yet.
Not yet?
I think it's gonna get worse.
Oh, and I, I'm of the opinion you approved the, the budget for twenty-one, which had an increase of two hundred thousand for, uh, services and fees. Uh, there was questions that where is the money gonna come from?
This is where the money is built up from.
Yeah. Twenty-seven dollars in annually?
No, this is just one month.
Yeah.
So it's part of motor vehicle fees that goes in the secondary road.
Okay, and, uh, that wouldn't be all of them, would it? And some of them go to two oh one account and some go to?
Yep, this is the secondary roads, but, and I'd have to go look at the treasurer's office to see their exact percentages, but, but that, that's, it's a pretty decent amount every month.
You know, what, what Becky has shown me is twenty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars, uh, received in January from, concur with this, uh, from motor vehicle license plate fees. Uh, that is money going into the secondary road system.
So that's where that money came from over the years.
Motor license plate fees and stuff get split into two different accounts. Some goes to the secondary road, some goes to the?
Yes.
The highway, some goes to the state.
The, the confusing part in where I'm at in this thing is that, uh, if there was a secondary road tax levy by statutory conditions established, uh, is there a requirement that those motor vehicle license plate fees have to go to secondary? If you understand where I'm going, that, uh, we, we've got a source of revenue, uh, and that would make available revenues for the two oh one account.
I think we'll probably have to check the legislative audit to make sure that.
Legislative audit, ten weeks ago, the assistants is saying to me that, uh, since Walworth County has no mill levy for secondary road maintenance, uh, the cash that is in the secondary road account is open and available for the two oh one account.
Okay, and so then if we do have a levy for the secondary roads, which we have not been applying, correct?
Correct.
So if we have that, then what about those funds?
Uh, I think those funds would be retained, and this is where legislative audit in the, the state needs to be, uh, brought into the scenario. Uh, if secondary roads are being provided revenue from motor vehicle license plates sales, uh, and under the statutory condition that, uh, county shall have a mill levy for secondary road maintenance, uh, are we utilizing the revenues where they?
Supposed to go?
Yes.
Okay. So your recommendation would be is that we set a levy as soon as possible?
Uh, Deb, I've, I've been working with Deb on this thing. Uh, Jim brought up where's the two hundred thousand gonna come from to increase the twenty-one budget? Uh, if, I considered the possibility that, uh, if you guys by resolution would establish, opt out, that's how the process would be, uh, if you opt out for a specific dollar value and say it's the two hundred thousand. Uh, if you guys by, you can only do it by resolution, uh, it can, it's gotta be determined that, uh, for how many years, uh, it's finite, that we're, I was gonna say meeting, but I gotta be a little bit, a little bit professional. Uh, the two hundred thousand could have came possibly, uh, from an opt-out for two hundred thousand dollars for the secondary road funding. Uh, uh, uh.
And this is the opt-out that you had talked about a year ago, where we needed to approve it by January, or July for it to go into effect by January?
Yeah, and I kinda lost my train of thought on rattling on, but, uh, I considered the possibility that, uh, you can't, uh, can you do a resolution in two thousand twenty and have physical receipts in cash in the two thousand twenty-one budget? Uh, Deb, and you could certainly intervene, Deb, but Deb's comment was that, uh, uh, you have, you would have to do the resolution prior to July of, it would have had to been done July of this year to see any receipts for the twenty-one operational year. So if, if we sit on this and consider the possibility of doing this, uh, you would have to, by resolution, have to do it prior to July of twenty-one, and any receipts from that action wouldn't be seen until twenty-two operating budget. Agree?
So realistically then, you might as well just get it out of the way and do it now if they're going to do it, so we don't run into the problem where last year you recommended getting it done, or this year and it didn't get done?
I don't think you can do it till, I would ask it done January to July. It can be done pretty differently.
Has to be done within the tax year prior.
And you can do it.
And we're not in the second year prior, so you have to do it within that section.
You can do it by resolution that you're just going to do it, um, for so much money for so many years. You made the amount, you named the years. Like, just, just say if you would say, um, two hundred thousand or four hundred thousand, whatever it is, you can ask for any amount then in that for five years, two hundred thousand for five years, you can ask for any amount up to two hundred thousand for the five years, or if you have a year where you don't need it, you don't have to request.
Like most opt-outs?
Right.
You can request up to a certain amount, but you don't have to take any of it if you choose not to.
So you could ju, just do that as a resolution, leaving the, um, public then responsible to bring it to a referendum if they so wish. Or you can pass the resolution that automatically brings it to a vote. And have the vote then, if you do that, it has to be voted on on or before the first part of the vote of that.
So then with that, um, I guess the commission has to make a decision if they're going to opt out, uh, but it would be good to make that determination now and then make sure that we have that paperwork in place so we can do it just right on the first meeting in January, so we don't run into the issue that, um, we're, we're another year behind if we forget. And then also on the, uh, the auditor just handed out, looks like it explains where all of the license funds go to. So they're all specially earmarked for special accounts and special agencies.
I, so the conversation, I think, was directed at do it today, but, uh, I don't think there's any value in doing it today. Uh, I, I think we, I, you, you need to take, uh, Deb, if you're willing to allow me to provide these numbers, uh, the statute that, uh, the maximum number for secondary road maintenance is, is a dollar eighty-five cents per thousand, I think I said that before. Uh, at a dollar eighty-five, that would generate one million one hundred and eighty-two thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars. Uh, if you target and opt out to the tune of around two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, I, I think that's a noble gesture to the, to the general public that we don't want it all, we just need a little bit of a shot in the arm.
What would that, what would that dollar amount be then to get that two thousand, Gary? Or two hundred thousand?
Uh, that dollar amount is thirty cents. Thirty cents generates a hundred and ninety-three thousand three hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Thirty cents?
Yeah, thirty cents. And if you have, um, I'm gonna comment, that's probably out of my realm, but if you have agglon that's worth two thousand dollars an acre, uh, that's two mils. And so in that entire, uh, the, the formula is, uh, two thousand is two mils times thirty cents is sixty cents an acre. So if you've got a thousand acres, uh, what is that, sixty dollars? Or is it?
Six hundred dollars. The, the average value in secondary roads, um, for agglan is one thousand five hundred and seventeen dollars, that's the average, which is about forty-six cents an acre for thirty cents. If you have a thirty cent, if you have a thirty cent mill levy at the average that it sits at now, it's about forty-six cents an acre.
And let me literally reiterate that, uh, uh, any action you do now will not automatically open up any revenue until the twenty-two budget. So we're back at, we're still sitting back at four oh one, but, uh.
Is this something that, uh, the commission's going to want to do, cause honestly, we should probably get this all ironed out so we don't run into another year lapse if it's something that you're going to do and push it into twenty twenty-three. We can always get all the paperwork drafted ahead of time, and so if you're going to do it, do it right away after the first meeting in January. If that's something you would like to see, right?
So it's my job to present options to the commission?
Correct, but if the commission is going to do that, you would want to see it done as soon as possible. That way we don't run into the year lapse again. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you all know why we don't have a secondary road levy? Do you remember why we don't? Um, you, I'll be, I'll be telling you. In nineteen ninety-seven is the year that the legislature passed the, um, the limitation where you can only request three percent or CPI, whichever is less of the amount of taxes you collected previous year for your budget. That's, you're, you're limited to that unless you opt out. In that particular year, the county had extra money in the, um, secondary road fund, and they didn't set a mill levy for ninety-seven in order to spend that money down. Then that legislation passed took effect in July of that year, so in nineteen ninety-eight, they couldn't levy any because you could only levy a percent of the previous levy, and the previous levy was zero. So this county just had, had always had a secondary road levy up until that point. Then their only option from nineteen ninety-eight on was an opt-out in order to get money specially designated for secondary roads. And that's, so it's all just a thing that happened with this county.
If we do that for secondary roads, does that affect everybody in the county? Deb, if we do that for secondary roads, does that affect everybody in the county? Or just the ones that the secondary roads pertains to?
Other municipalities. Nothing within municipality. Only the land lying outside of municipalities are in the secondary roads.
So we're taxing the ones that those roads are designated for. And not only that, we're taxing them to help pay for other roads also.
Can I respond? Secondary road funds are restricted. Where you can only work, you can't use, you can't use collections from a secondary road tax levy on a county highway system road. That's illegal. But the ones that we wanna tax for secondary roads, they're already being taxed for other county roads also. So they're gonna get, so if you live on a secondary road, you're already paying taxes for county roads that they're not dealing with. So now we're gonna tax them on top of that to take care of their own roads too.
It's my opinion, help me out. It's my opinion that I, I didn't feel it was possible, but I think our department solely runs on motor vehicle fees and wheel tax. There is no property tax money that goes to the highway department for operation.
Except that very small snow removal levy.
And snow removal, snow removal is what secondary roads should be. There's a wheel, there's a tax for snow removal. There is no tax for secondary road revenue. And that's what Becky is referring to.
Yes, Jamie.
So basically what everyone is trying to get across is that other than your licensure and things like that, as far as no property tax dollars are going to any secondary roads in this county except for the snow removal exception. Correct?
Yeah, there's no property taxes to operate the highway department.
Okay. Not only the secondary, all the roads?
Yep. And by virtue of, of, I'm not gonna read either one of that numbers.
Gary, you and I talked the other day when we met there. Because we have the secondary road cash balance. And knowing that we can't do this levy or anything right now, that funds, those funds can only be used on secondary road. And we have quite a bit of dollars that we spent this year for secondary roads that came out of the general, or the main 201 account. So my suggestion was, let's take those dollars that we have in secondary road account, transfer them to the secondary road fund for the expenses that we paid out of that account to help subsidize that budget. Then, next year, if we feel that we need to, we can do this levy to help out the secondary road accounts and get that fund where we can actually maintain and take care of our secondary roads. The other thing that we talked about was there's, there's a lot of roads that are classified as secondary roads that probably should be designated as part of our highway system in Walworth County.
Primary.
Our primary deals. So taking those out of there as an example, and I, correct me if I'm wrong here. One of the main roads that we talked about was north of Mulbridge, north of the airport, the Badgley Road as an example. Not a lot of farm ground there, but that is considered a secondary road. Is that correct?
Yes.
So if we were to do this levy on secondary roads, those dollars would be assessed, and some of those dollars would be able to be used towards that secondary road. Now, what my point was, there's not a lot of farm ground there. Not a lot of those dollars that would be taxed would be coming out of those people's pockets to fix that road. So that road really should be changed to a primary road, one of the highway systems in the county, instead of secondary road. And get the secondary roads out to the areas where it's farmland, it's areas where people are actually having tax dollars come out to pay for those roads to get them fixed.
Right now, just kind of a follow-up thing. Right now, with a large, large isn't the right word, with the cash balance in secondary road account in the bank, that is a luxury to somebody that's micromanaging. Will be able to provide by transfer, if we do transfers, cash out of that account and bring it into the budget. And I'd like to say that with good management, that cash balance in the bank, especially if there's more funds going in, that cash in the bank will be suitable to get us to a position where maybe do an opt-out or a specific value over the course of, and at the same time, do some transitions of the county highway system from secondary to primary and primary to secondary. Stuff that I was talking about early, that I haven't had the time to do, so.
Yes, Jamie.
I think Gary answered most of my questions, but how long do you think it would? Or, let me rephrase this. It would probably be at your discretion that we need to update our county map with regard to what's primary, what's secondary, before we go into the opt-out issue, is what you're saying, correct?
I think it should be at the same time.
Okay. And that would be at your discretion, after communicating with people, how we? Because when was the last time we've even changed our map, Gary?
The state is called me, the first time toward the end of that term, the state was saying, Gary, you need to think about revising your highway system. And they've talked to me once or twice since I've been back that, about a revision. Historically, I think there are probably 30 to 40 years with no change in the county highway system. And the state's saying that's under, that times change, things change.
Would that be part of maybe switching stuff over to Mulbridge also?
That is a whole different...
That would have to be...
But wouldn't that be part of it too, if you did all that at the same time?
If Mulbridge agrees to accept that into their highway system, or a street system, or whatever they call it. We can't just say, here, Mulbridge, this belongs to you now. Correct, Gary?
Yes.
And I would assume they're not going to do it, as Deb said, unless they annex it. But just kind of to briefly summarize, I think what Gary is saying is that we should probably get things squared away so we can use the funds now that are in the account to pay off the additional expenses that we're gonna incur over the next two years, allow him time to change the map, and then also at the same time then, get the opt-out decision decided before next July. Because we will have funds potentially available to cover additional costs for 2021 and 20, and this year, correct? 2019 and 2020?
I guess I'm just kinda curious, how does that process really work when we're changing roads like that? Is that a...
It's a resolution. It is a resolution to the department transportation, and that resolution goes to the board, and the board accepts a reject, so.
Okay. Yes, Mary.
Can you? We talked the other day, our secondary road balance, as of right now, we weren't sure exactly where it was at because there were some transfers. Do you know what that number is exactly?
Did you? This is the current one, right? 928? We're showing 883,073.31.
So that has nothing, was there some of these transfers we talked about? Or is that stuff that you just passed around that's going to be transferred?
This has not been done.
What I, what I passed around, that's, that's on the shelf for transfer. But not today. Because that's where I need to put together the expenses on the Riverview Road, and so...
When we talked, the other day, we talked about dollar amounts that you figured you had associated with secondary road? Rough estimations?
That's, is that the dollar?
Is that that 222? Or is that on that transfer?
Transfer, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
118, 118,053.57.
And that will go up with, with the cost of chip sealing through a new Everts on Riverview Road. And I, in my mind, I kinda pre-nounced if we should process that transfer. I think it's, I think it's, and like I said, I gotta get all of the expenses with that Riverview Road thing. So I kinda held it back a little bit to that, to let that increase for the possibility of if we had to do a supplement to the township budget, or if that cash is just available to pull out in transfers. And I think the later is where we're sitting.
I will check with legislative audit to be sure on that.
I guess I would just assume, see it, take the 200,000 out like you was talking about. And then there's enough in there, and we still have money going into that other account. So I would say just transfer the 200,000.
As far as I know, I think it is, if you make a motion, a transfer can be made.
But I guess my question is, can we make a motion to transfer 200,000 out of secondary road to the, to 1 account without having actual expense to secondary road? You can't, can you?
No, I don't think so. It's gotta be trying to extend this.
So it'll be done more as a budget supplement at the end then? Is that kinda how it would be the cleanest or not, Victor?
I'd have to, I'd have to look into it because there's different, different things you guys can do as far as transferring different funds, but I don't have them all down.
Yes, Jamie.
But the one thing that we're looking at here too is, is we have, we're very lucky that we have the 800,000 dollars in there. But I think that you need to look at too is, is that 800,000 may cover us for the next couple of years. But you still need to probably pass that opt-out in 2021 to make funds available. Because if we didn't have that 800,000, we would be in a world of hurt right now without a doubt. Is that kinda what you're saying, Gary?
Yeah, I wanna, yes, definitely. We've got, since I came back, it was like, how do you plan on projects? For instance, we put together a five-year road plan that consists of an asphalt overlay on, on four miles of county asphalt road. If the cash balance in the township side of that thing is at 800,000 dollars, when theoretically, the secondary roadside, don't hold me to the numbers, but I'm thinking somewhere around 250 to 300,000 dollars annually. And maintenance covers the secondary road maintenance. So that 800,000 dollars should be in the system to where that is the source, get it out of secondary as a restricted account, and get it into an account that, that now you've got money to plan a project. Whether it's reconstruction of a mile or two of county highway system road. I don't think, we don't have that luxury right now. Can you guys comment? Is there, there's actually no cash that's not restricted to plan a five-year road project for the future? Understand what I'm saying? Why, why are we giving a balance of 883,000 dollars in secondary roads that's restricted? When it could be in a nest egg for planning projects? For instance, we're scheduled to chip seal Slum Creek next year, and we're scheduled to incorporate that mile into Indian Creek. As the state's gonna be chip sealing in the park. That would be a project that if everything was on the coordinated deal, you're not budgeting money, or you're not taking money from the 201 account per se. It's there in the bank, and you don't have to use any, any wheel tax money for it and blink like that.
Could you set up an account number to put that money into?
I wanna say yes. That along with the STP funds?
Well, if you check into it to see what kind of an account you can get it set into for, to do that.
Yes.
I think, I think that's the, to me, that's the big thing of getting the roads remapped. To have things more, so the funds that are sitting out there in these accounts are being targeted to the actual tax dollars that are being taxed to fix the roads that, kind of, they're being taxed by. That would be a huge advantage of getting some of these secondary roads labeled properly. And some of these roads that are secondary roads, probably township roads. That way we're not taking tax dollars from Joel Blow down here that is getting taxed because he has a secondary road by him and using those dollars on a road that really has no secondary road taxation alongside it.
Right now, the entire thing is funded by motor vehicle license and...
Right, right. But to do that levy, to me, that levy, and I don't, I can't speak for the farmers, but those that have secondary roads around them want them fixed, they want better roads. I don't think they would have as much of a problem paying a tax to have dollars set aside to make sure that the roads are being taken care of as much as if they were being taxed to have money going to a road that has no secondary road tax on it. So...
Yes, Jamie.
I think that that's what Gary is saying, is that the opt-out and the redo of the highway, or the county highway map system should be done together. That way, like Commissioner Shlomer is saying is, is that proper parties should be taxed for what services they're being delivered. I think everyone is in agreement, but that, Gary's saying is, is that that should be done close to the same time. So we don't have those issues come up that Commissioner Shlomer was talking about.
Like Riverview Road, that road, the one that that services, there isn't any farmers that services everybody.
At Everts, yeah.
On that front-end road, which would make it theoretically a candidate for county highway system.
Right.
Yes.
If they had, if they, if Walworth County had any organized townships, which they don't, that's what their organized townships would do, is set the levy for the care of the roads in that township.
the care of the roads in that township, the snow removal of the roads in that township. So that's what a township org would normally do. And that's what our secondary road levy would be for, is, you know, work on those roads. It's... So it's just the fact that we don't have any organized townships. And we messed up in the last second, so...
If you could get them set up, we can work for it.
Yes. Getting... Getting back to the shortfall we're looking at possibly in our township though, to me, if we do... If we can take dollars out of our secondary road account and transfer them in to take care of the expenses that we had on secondary roads, we will cover our shortfall in our township roads.
Yes.
So that's what I would suggest that we do, get that taken care of. So we are not showing a... Having to do a balance or a budget supplement there.
How it's gonna be handled on my office is that, uh, we're gonna continue to, uh... Admit by statutory conditions and record all secondary expenses. And at a time chosen by the highway department, then the transfer page comes to you guys, you vote on it. And, uh, the cash comes from secondary and provides revenues for the overall budget.
So then you don't need a motion until you present an actual statement of billing?
Yes.
Okay.
And that is the statement of billing. Right now, we're at one-hundred-and-eighteen thousand.
So you want that money transferred today then? Or you wanna wait till you have a grant total?
I will still have to...
Okay. That answers my question.
And I... I can't legally project that, uh, well, we're gonna do this prior to the end of the year. I can't project it. It's gotta be an actual expenditure.
Okay. So it'd be more like towards the end of the year when we're doing our budget supplements? And then you'd be coming in saying, this is what we spent, we need to transfer. The money is there.
Now, if... If you understand that that overall ending balance picture, eight-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand in your monthly report, uh, by virtue of this transfer stuff that's going on, uh, that provides revenue for that budget. And, uh, but when that budget turns red, uh, if it turns red and we go the negative deficit type, uh, then we look at supplement. And, uh, just kinda thinking out loud that the supplement could be... Could be supplement the township portion of the overall budget. And then work toward... I... I don't wanna see that happen, but, uh... Clear the mud?
Please, ma'am. Got it.
Talk to your constituents. Uh, the conversation today was, can you afford thirty percent... Thirty cents per thousand dollars a valuation? Uh, based on the summary of the conversation, uh, for the two-thousand-and-twenty-three tax year? Two-thousand-and-twenty-two tax year?
Twenty-two pay twenty-three, or twenty-one pay twenty-two. Any money that comes in for twenty-two. So it would be the two-thousand-and-twenty-one taxes payable in twenty-two.
It would be twenty-two payable twenty-three. Because we can't enact until after the first of the year.
Yeah, but if you do twenty-one, we're gonna pay twenty, pay twenty-one.
Correct.
So we can read, we can do it next year, so it'll be twenty-one, pay twenty-two.
Okay.
And just...
I see what you're saying.
Clarification, we can do this with a... with a resolution. We don't have to take it to a vote of the people.
Yes.
But they can refer it.
They can refer it.
They... Yes, they have, uh, twenty days after the, um, first day that it's publicized to bring it. And it takes five percent of the voters to sign a petition to bring it to referral. And then it has to be... The election has to be held before the first of October.
Any other questions, gentlemen? We'll move on. I emailed out that resolution from Webb. Uh, do you guys have a chance to read it?
I don't.
Sure.
I don't think it...
You're in... You're in agreement with that resolution that they presented to you, aren't you, Gary?
Uh, generally, the whole response until I ask you.
I personally, from reading it, it... There really isn't that much difference from the one that was done thirty years ago. And since they're a nonprofit corporation or whatever entity they fall into, our easement is only good for twenty years. So we've been operating without an easement for a while. And so that came up to Gary as we need to get something done. So Gary sent out a proposed easement to them. Uh, their legal counsel sent one back to us, which is basically, in his explanation, the same as the one that we've done before. I think the main concern, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Gary, was that the, uh... When you're boring under the road, that there needs to be an encasement. I think that was the issue that came up. Is that the right terminology, Gary? On the water pipes? Or an casing or what's the right term, Gary?
Uh, yeah, they... They commented that they'd like to, uh... They'd like to open cut. And I can't remember if they were just on the asphalt roads, but I think it was overall, they wanted to open cut the road, uh, to the desired depth. Uh, they wanted to encase the line and place it and then use DOT standard specifications for compaction, uh, to put it in. Uh, Scott, you probably understand that, that, uh, they didn't want to... Their... Their proposal was, uh... I wasn't getting my tongue. Instead of minimal disturbance with a... with a board casing, uh, then they're looking at maximum disturbance by open cut. And, uh, I... I probably wouldn't have a problem with that unless there's some access concerns that, uh, for the traveling public. Uh... It's... I was kinda shocked to think that, uh, my original position was we've got an easement that was granted in eighty-three and eighty-four during the original implementation of Webb. Uh, if it's been a living document that long, right, and we need to modify it? And then the comment came that, uh, they're looked upon, and I don't know if the right word is, uh, franchise? And, uh, brought to my attention that those resolutions are only good for twenty years and we've been operating under a resolution that's expired.
Then how is that? Because Webbwise says they got a blank easement.
Uh, I think that creates a little conflict there, um, I think, and...
Might be a tactic?
Um... Potentially, but the main thing is, is we need to get on paper what the agreement between Webb and Walworth County is. And it should be granted with the approval of the highway superintendent before we grant it.
Now, when you're talking about they wanna open cut, I mean, you're kinda losing me a little bit on that. That's something that they wanna do now, Ben, is open cut certain roads? Is that what it is?
If they're crossing... If they're crossing... And I think this case is primarily because of the Florida them or... Uh, speculating that this is prior to the, uh, the construction stuff that they're planning. And, uh, it is not right for me to comment that... That they're trying to save money. Uh, but ultimately, that's what was housed to me in when open cut a road to a desired elevation. Uh, place, uh, the casing pipe in the ground, uh, place the... The infrastructure line and then recompact, bring the road back up in the condition that it was in with proper, uh, uh, density tests and things like that. Uh, this kind of a gray area that I don't wanna sound negative. Uh, will there be an engineer on staff that, uh, that won't provide the testing? Uh, you know, so...
But I mean, are they trying to change some of the easement on what... How it was before? I know we have visited, uh, some of their conditions were before.
The original easement, uh, resolution, uh, required casing all waterways. And so this is in compliance with casings, but it appears they don't wanna wind bore a casing and then place the pipe inside. And I don't know if there's any engineering standards that, uh... That would simplify their installation by doing that. But, uh...
So do you think that, um... That that document right now needs a modification then? If your concern is, is that an engineer needs to approve the... The replacement of the... Of the dirt then, right? To the same level that it was before it was removed? That's your concern, right?
It's...
Okay.
Can I just read a little bit? According to the resolution that was sent out, basically, the original resolution is the exact same from the final, be it further resolved to the end. Is what the... That's the original document. So basically, the first part of it is basically talking about the, uh... The original document when it was signed or anything else. And then it goes into be it further resolved... Be it resolved that the Webb Water Development Association Incorporated is allowed and permitted to run underground pipelines and apparatuses for transmitting water and all purposes for which said corporation was formed along any and all right-of-ways between all sections in Wal... In Walworth County, South Dakota. So long as said transmission and distribution pipe is buried, so not to interfere with the building of any roads or causing any liability to the county. Be it further resolved that there... Where the pipeline is installed in the public right-of-way, such right-of-way must be restored to as near as original condition as is practical with normal construction methods. Then it goes into the final be it further resolved with supposedly was exactly the same from the original deal. So reading this, I'm not seeing what they're really changing other than it gives them the right to do a... Bury a water line in a... in the right-of-way. And just an updated resolution.
But I think what we're... What they're referring to, that's gotta be that main line they're wanting to put in. And if they go in the one in our right-of-way, I mean, their only place to put the dirt is right on top of our county... County road. There is nowhere else to let dirt go.
Did it?
So I mean...
It does say storage of material. No material may be stored within eight feet from the edge of the pavement or travel way or within the shoulder lines unless otherwise approved by the county superintendent.
So that would eliminate it coming onto the road if that... Where they find a place to place their dirt is their issue in hours. Because your main concern is, is not blocking the road. And the only time that I think that Gary was saying is that there would be a blocking of the road is if they go across and make a cut, place a line in. And then Gary's concerned, and correct me if I'm wrong, Gary, is, is that wanna make sure that there's proper compaction once that line... Once that cut is made in the road, so we don't have issues later because of compaction. And I think Commissioner Shlomer kinda summed that up with, uh, goes back to this standard of what it was before they even made their cut.
And that... That topic right there just says gravel and other roadways. Pipelines installed perpendicularly or longitudinally in a gravel or other roadway, right-of-way will be open... Will be an open cut method. Roadways may be closed during construction for crossing provided a detour signing is maintained. All lanes will remain clear and open during the hours of darkness. Pipelines installed longitudinally in the right-of-way will be an open cut.
She's gonna make that. I think it's... Is that item eight that says out for the road?
Yeah. And now we can read that paved in, uh... Future paved roadways. Pipelines installed perpendicular to asphalt or concrete paved roadways will be installed in casings or otherwise placed underneath the pavement without disturbing scene. Pipelines installed longitudinally in the right-of-way will be an open cut. Minimum of one half of paved surfacing will be left clear and operate to traffic at all times. All lanes will remain clear and open during the hours of darkness.
So if it's paved, it's gonna be bored under.
Mm-hmm, with a casing. And that's how everyone reads it, bored with a casing. I think that was one of the concerns is that there was no... Since we had an expired contract or expired easement, that there was no provision to make them or require them to have a casing.
The only concern I've got was the whole thing about the eight-foot from the right-of-way is in... In number eight. It says pipelines installed longitudinally in the right-of-way will be an open cut. A minimum of one-half of the paved surfacing will be left clear and open... Uh, and open to traffic at all times. All lanes will remain clear and open during... So...
I have the same.
Why... Why do we have to close traffic if we're not having any dirt piled up there?
I would assume during... When they're doing their construction...
Just to stay away from the construction zone farther away?
My kinda reading of that is, is that if they want to then, when they're doing their construction and putting in a line longitudinally, they could have flagmen or women close off a portion of the road, put dirt onto our road as long as it's removed before the evening to open back up. So like, they could be moving along, couldn't they? So you're worried about them dumping during the day? It wouldn't be a long-term dumping, but they could still do that if they chose to close the road, keep one lane open, have flag people and... And put it on there. Is that kinda how you read it, Commissioner Shlomer?
But then when you go up to, uh, item three, storage of material. No material shall be stored within eight foot of the edge of the pavement or travel way or within the shoulder lines unless otherwise approved by the county superintendent. So they... They can't put it on the paved road.
That's what we would think.
Uh, or any road unless the superintendent okayed. So the only thing I can see as far as the, uh... Half of the roadway being shut down would just be to get traffic away from the construction zone.
That's how I would read it. That's how I would read that.
That would be the only...
That's how lawyers stay employed. Basically.
For the record, item number eight is paved in FAS, that federal aid secondary. That could be a federal aid road if it's a gravel. That's why FAS pays for federal aid secondary.
But I think one of our biggest concerns with the last time we talked about this resolution was the fact of them being able to stockpile dirt on the road. And according to number three, they can't do that. If I remember right.
So, Gary, are you already with this or not?
I initially had the first thoughts that... I initially had the first thoughts that made that that it seemed like one item was overrunning another item.
Do we want to ask them for clarification on that? Of what their interpretation of it is?
I think that'd be a good idea.
Okay.
I I guess I would say that if they're closing off the one half of the road because they're running pipeline down there just for safety reasons, that's one thing. But, you know, the storage of material up there on number three is pretty self, pretty clear that they can't do that. I would say if we could get that clarified, that's it's just for purposes of safety that they would have one lane shut down.
That they, yeah, just that the two paragraphs do not allow them to place any materials on our roadway without prior highway superintendent approval. We don't care if they're going to have like people out there and not dump on our road. If it's like Commissioner Slummer is saying is that they just don't want to have cars that near our equipment or their equipment. And if they say, yes, we agree that we are not going to place any materials on your road without highway superintendent approval, then we would be good.
Can we prove this without having?
I would get clarification.
Get clarification, okay.
Where was the part when they close out the road?
That's 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 right in item eight, the final part here. Pipelines installed longitudinally in the right of way will be an open cut. Minimum of one half of paved surfacing will be left clear and open to traffic at all times. All lanes will remain clear and open during the hours of darkness.
It does look lost, we said, but don't they override each other?
Well, it just says they may close off one lane there during the working hours, but at night they'll be both open.
I guess I'd go on the record saying that I'm okay with the resolution.
Once we get clarification right now.
There should be clarification on that, I think.
And we're looking for publication on November eight, right?
I would eight and three, just basically eight and three, that there's there's there is no storage material on our roads without permission. And why are they closing half of the road down? Is it just for safety reasons or what?
Because I think you could take that two ways how they're saying that, I mean.
That's why you want clarification.
Yeah, it could be to prove it the way we're not knowing any different. It looks like they were okaying it. Because they're not saying what could be the reason why they're closing off after that road. I would like to have clarification.
I think I think number three would have to override that.
Well, you'd think so, but. Me, there's a but there.
You and me. I'll ask for clarification.
I will. To Mr. Tovary.
Well, I'll send you the table out and tell them next week.
So I'll try and get him an email out today. So that way we can have a response back for next Tuesday's meeting, right? Because when the next one is.
Next move it on.
Yep.
I discussed gravel road signing project that believe that's scheduled for 2023. If you remember, we hired KLJ to engineer the project. And KLJ is is wanting to get on the first meeting in November. And they want to make it a public forum. And they wanted all the municipal representatives here along with the commission to explain the program. And so that's kind of what brought that about is just for gravel roads, not the asphalt portion. So the date will be November tenth, right?
Yes, Becky.
The first meeting in November will have to be on preferably the fifth because the canvas of elections or the canvas of votes has to be done. Because that's election week.
You said the fifth?
And, yep, yep. We have to have it done by Friday and submit it to the state. And another issue we might have with that is how are we going to control the amount of people in the room?
Because KLJ did ask if there was any internal operations that would interfere with the COVID.
Yeah.
Because we were kind of sticking to the meeting where you of the ten.
Well, if we move up to the courtroom, as long as people.
How are you going to get a view on social distancing? If you're getting from Mowbridge, basically, you're saying Mowbridge or Casca, Selby.
I I tend to think Mowbridge, they don't have much gravel. But obviously, they'll be invited. And what did you come up with, five?
Well, no, I, well, yeah, so I mean, you're talking, you know, two from Java, two from Mowbridge, two from Selby, two from Casca. It's it'll add up fast.
Would it be more beneficial to have it at a different location at a different time just for that purpose instead of during a commission meeting?
Where would you have it?
I don't know, it's just an idea at the school, so I don't know.
What do you estimate the total number of people would be?
Well, us all here and another ten there, just the stragglers. You could easily have.
My my response to KLJ, I think you can delegate that correspond with KLJ and say on your invites, request only one, one. Maybe one representative from each community. I I don't want to override you guys' policy on that COVID thing, but I think the courtroom would be a suitable place if we limit participation and make them wear masks or whatever.
Can we make them wear masks?
When we did our election school in May, we ended up in the courtroom and there were, I don't remember how many people we ended up having. And we just like had everybody sit far apart from each other and just did it that way. So we were over the ten, but in some cases you don't have a choice.
We can, we could schedule it for that day, maybe do it like at one o'clock if there's, if the courtroom is available and and play by ear. It's kind of what I'm thinking. Is that what you think?
Yeah, I definitely wouldn't do it in here. So we need to see if we, if the courtroom's even available that way.
And then we would just.
A special meeting?
Well, we could take a break and reconvene and just say we're going to reconvene at one o'clock and not close the meeting.
Then we can have, we can mark off.
Yep.
Sixty spaces.
As long as the courtroom's not being used, yeah, we could just recess at, say, we get done at eleven thirty with the reconvening time at one o'clock. It's at in the courtroom on the third floor. And then we could still run it as part of our meeting. Wouldn't have to do a special meeting as long as we designate that part of the meeting is going to be here, the rest of the meeting, which would be the KLJ meeting would be upstairs.
That'll give you time to get Becky, if you would check and see if it's even available. Should make sure it's available.
Yes.
Okay.
You want to send him an email about what you put together that I'll forward it to KLJ?
Okay.
Did you, are you done with that, KLJ then?
Yep.
Did you want to talk about the grader?
Oh.
Request permission to advertise for a used grader for the Highway Department fleet. Will write specs on it. And advertise for two weeks. And the purpose is James's machine. I can't remember, he told me this morning. He's at two thousand two or seven thousand two hundred and forty-three, I think, hours on it. That could come off warranted by the end of the year. This is an in-depth metro management system where on the financial side, where once that expires, our guaranteed buyback of a hundred and fifty thousand goes away. Whereby it's important that if we could find a used unit with low hours, we would purchase that. And we would purchase in fiscal year twenty. And also surplus, James's machine in two thousand twenty, a hundred and fifty thousand of income would come back if nobody bids higher than a hundred and fifty. And that money would be utilized to offset the cost of a used unit. And in theory, the used unit would be in the fleet for a period of time that we get through the rotation of graders and kind of get back into some kind of solitude. I think it's extremely extremely important that the James's machine, I think the value drops considerably with the hours we've got on it. And we don't want to jeopardize losing the guaranteed buyback of a hundred and fifty thousand.
I agree. I make that motion, the advertisement.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor for advertising. Motion on a second, any more discussion? Hearing and all favor say aye.
Aye.
Who's saying aye?
Sale goods on what day, Becky?
Well, which meeting are you looking at?
Then we start advertising next.
The twentieth, October twentieth.
Ooh. Any chance of doing it before then?
Our next meeting is just Tuesday the sixth, so you wouldn't have time to advertise before then.
I think that's a special meeting sometime, Gary, if you want. Because you said before that.
Okay, send the advertisements to papers.
The earliest we could get it to the paper would be the publication next week.
I feel good.
Yeah, so all the good papers, you have this meeting? One of those papers, I think you can get there yet this week, you know? No, like.
We'd have trouble.
I think it's gonna be in by ten.
They won't take it now for this week's paper.
No, it had to be in by ten o'clock this morning, I think.
No, that was yesterday.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
Monday, Friday or Monday is what the papers deadlines, different deadlines are.
So the earliest, if you're talking special meeting, earliest would be Monday, first publication Monday and next week. And the special meeting on, help me out.
Well, if you get it to the papers for next week's paper.
Comes out on Wednesday the thirty, or the seventh.
The seventh, and how many days? Is it ten or two weeks?
Two weeks.
Let's not call it twenty-first. If you have to advertise for two weeks, could you have to go on the date that the paper comes out?
Well, I thought it was two weeks. But you think it is, it could be ten days?
I think it's two weeks.
I think it's two weeks.
Two or bits. Ten days is for supplement.
So you're normally scheduled on what day in October?
Twentieth.
The twentieth, and we can't change that because an advertisement for a variance went out. So it would have to end up being a special meeting if we have another meeting that week.
Does the, does the advertisement have to be in the Tribune or can it be in like the reminder?
It has to be in our official designated papers.
Which is the Tribune?
At the beginning of the year, which is the Tribune and the Shelby Record.
The Shelby Record comes out earlier, doesn't it?
Shelby Record is on Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Well.
Thursday.
It's Thursday, Morris Tribune is Wednesday. Online, at least.
Consider me confused that if it's in the paper the week of the fifth, then the fifth and the vote and commission meeting on the twentieth.
I tried to call it two weeks because you have to go out on the date that the paper comes out, which is the seventh, the eighth.
Oh.
So you have to be right here for the two week period.
That's all, Randy.
I mean, but it's not going to take much to have a special meeting and address that one thing. We do it Wednesday, we do it Thursday, well, Thursday, twenty-second. We've got a special meeting, it's only going to take long. We'll have to wait for the second, I think that's going to be as soon as we could do it for the two weeks.
Can we send for that and try to iron through the other issues?
Oh, you think that they're a think, you would have been sooner than that? You mean, is that what you think they're thinking? Well, I talked and I said it would be two weeks.
Yeah, I I don't think it's a problem. You're having a meeting on the twentieth? Is it, I I don't want to delegate, yes, but can you move that meeting date to the Thursday?
No, yeah, because there's already publications in the paper and a variance for.
You have to say have a special meeting on the twenty, twenty-first or twenty-second?
They were, I'm not really aware of any that speak too much about, you understand what I'm saying? Let's go with what we have to go with. So it would be the.
Twenty-second?
Special meeting probably on the twenty-second, right?
Okay, nine o'clock? Or do you want to do eight o'clock?
It's up to you.
It doesn't matter.
Nine o'clock, nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock?
Yep. Two meetings, come on, Scott.
I'll leave your chairs comfortable.
Did you hear that, Kevin?
You done? Uh, you want to do the executive session thing? It was my request, but. Request executive session personnel.
Okay, I would take a motion for that. I just want to take a motion on the floor, I need a second, a second, you got a second? Any more discussion? Hearing and all favor say aye.
Okay.
Call the meeting back to order. Executive, come out of executive session at twelve thirty-three. Executive, come out of executive session at twelve thirty-three. Any old business?
I have one. Back in January, we discussed policy change for highway employees and I think landfill going to go from comp time to overtime. And if I remember right, we discussed it and agreed on it, we were going to change the policy in our book, we never did vote on that. We need to get that.
We need to get that.
Yeah, we need to get quite a few things there in the books, that policy.
I know Deb has got that, we're going to have to change that language from comp time to overtime for landfill and, and highway, right?
Well, it was different for, like, they wanted comp. We wanted overtime. It was different for.
Right. We need to get that cleared up. I know there's some other issues we have discussed over the months, but, but technically we have not approved that, we didn't change that from comp time to overtime.
Well, how about it's, just we have to do it, say the second meeting October, we got?
There's a lot to be changed.
Yeah, but we should agreeable on that, let's get all of our ducks in a row so we can get them changes done by the second meeting October.
That's all I had.
Are you on that? Okay. Any other old business?
I guess I can bring up one thing of old business, just let everybody know. Uh, tomorrow on this jail advisory board deal, uh, they've all been told that their meeting by the sixth of October is the final thing, whether they're in or out. Tomorrow, Marion and I are both going to Gettysburg, we're having a special meeting down there tomorrow. Uh, we're on the agenda there. And then on the sixth of October, I will be going to, I won't be at our meeting, I go to Leola from the Pearson counties. And, uh, we'll have an answer from everybody then. Right now, we, we have one county that has already decided not to. And that's Sioux County. But everybody else, as far as I know, is in. But they wanted a presentation of both Dewey and the Pearson sorrow, or Potter. Potter and the Pearson. So we'll have an answer by the sixth and then, uh, depending on that, we'll make a decision on where we go from there and about the jails, so.
Any other old business? New business?
Look for adjournments.
Oh, 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 oh. I had moved, we have a special meeting on Friday, October second at eight fifteen in the way, for personnel. Personnel. Group called.
All ready? Any other, yes, Becky?
When?
Friday.
Friday, at what time?
Eight fifteen. And Scott, we'll get with you about agenda items for that.
Okay, cause I won't be here.
Yes. And we'll, I'll get to you with the, when you're done here.
Okay.
Oh, I thought you were saying.
No, I'm just following my mask.
Anything else? Here and none, I take a motion. I got a motion on the floor, I got a second. I'll second. Any other discussion? Here and none, all favor say aye.
All right.